Hmm.
Hi Warren, how are you?
I'm okay, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. Hi Drew. Hi Dick.
Hello.
Hello. Hi Dick.
Okay, thank you. How are you?
Good, good.
Hi Drew.
Oh, that's why we're here.
Hello. Hello.
Hi Dick.
There it is, right there.
Thank you.
I was like, what's happening? I'm hearing my cell. I call the June Planning Board meeting to order. I just want to note that on virtual, we have only one member, Dick Hermans. Everyone else is here in person. The first item up is the Dale Mitchell Lot Line Adjustment. And to refresh everyone's memory, last month, we had the public hearing. We closed the public hearing and we went over the seeker. They made a negative declaration. And then we were just waiting on the documents to be approved by Warren, the different deeds and the easements. So I guess Warren, why don't you tell us where we are with those items?
Yeah, so I, it took me a little while to get up to speed. I had to read the, the minutes of the last meeting. And I finally prepared a resolution which I sent down this afternoon, which I think is fine and correctly states what happened at the last public hearing. And allows you to pass the resolution and with the conditions that I've specified. The only issue would be, I just wanted George to check the cross easement agreement. Just against the, the map, just to make sure that looked good. That doesn't have to be done tonight. It could be done, you know, after you pass the resolution. But if George had a chance to do that, that would be fine. And I reviewed the proposed merger deeds. They look fine to me, so those were made in addition of a, of the approval that those will have to be filed with proof of filing sent to, to me and to the planning board.
Okay. Okay, and so George, did you have a chance to do that?
Okay.
So the cross easement thing is fine. And we have updated maps and printed map. We got a PDF and you don't have to unfurl it. We, we, did you, you, you looked at that map? The newest version, it was PDFed about a week ago?
I think that's the one I was looking at.
Yeah. Okay. I guess, let's open one up.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
Named by the Department of Health.
Yeah, I can still see. Yeah, that's the, that's the one I was looking at.
Okay, so do any members have any questions or comments at this time? All right, so that's the case, then we'll, I'll go on to reading the resolution and we'll vote on it. Town of Pine Plains Planning Board, resolution approving lot.
Oh. There's a typo in that. Should be approving the minor subdivision. You can take out the word lot.
First lot.
There may be other typos because I I rewrote this several times.
Resolution approving the minor subdivision Lot Line Adjustment Application between Dale O. Mitchell Living Trust dated 8/29/08 and Stewart's Ice Cream Co. Inc. Whereas the Dale O. Mitchell Living Trust dated August 29, 2008, is the owner of a 33.878 acre parcel of land located on the east side of New York State Route 82 in the town of Pine Plains, Dutchess County, New York, having been assigned a tax parcel number 134200-6871-00-437906-0000. Here, herein after referred to as the Mitchell property. And whereas Stewart's Ice Cream Co. Inc. is the owner of a 1.506 acre contiguous parcel of land located on the east side of New York State Route 82 in the town of Pine Plains, Dutchess County, New York, herein after Stewart's property. And whereas on or about March 30th, 2022, Mitchell submitted a subdivision and lot line adjustment application to the planning board, seeking in relevant part, the subdivision from the Mitchell property of a .496 acre parcel of land adjacent to and east of the Stewart's property to be transferred to Stewart's and merged with Stewart's 1.506 acre parcel to create a single parcel of land. All as shown on a survey map showing the boundary line adjustment between the lands of Dale O. Mitchell Living Trust dated 8/29/08 and the lands of Stewart's Ice Cream Co. Inc. dated March 28, 2022, prepared by Richard P. Handback License Land Surveyor. And whereas the said subdivision map and application were reviewed by the Pine Plains Planning Board in accordance with the provisions of Section 230-8 of the Town Code, that's April 13th, 2022 meeting. And whereas the proposed subdivision map and application submissions have been forwarded to the attorney to the town for his review and the engineer for the town, CPL, for their review and comments. And whereas this action has been declared to be an unlisted action under seeker and a Part 1 of the short form environmental assessment form has been submitted for review by the planning board and by the attorney and engineer to the town. And whereas the applicant and Stewart's have represented to the planning board that there are no plans for the utilization or development of a, of the .496 acre of land to be merged with the Stewart's property. And whereas the planning board determined that this action does not have any potential for significant environmental impacts and that a DEIS need not be prepared. And whereas the public hearing on said application was scheduled for May 11th, 2022, it opened and closed on the same date. And whereas this application was duly referred to the Count, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for its review in accordance with the requirements of Section 239-M of the General Municipal Law. And whereas Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development has notified the Town Planning Board by response transmitted on April 21st, 2022, that this is a matter of local concern. And whereas proposed warranty deeds have been prepared by the attorneys for Mitchell and Stewart's, providing in relevant part for the transfer of .496 acre parcel to Stewart's and, and merger of the same with the remaining property of Stewart's. And the said warranty deeds have been reviewed by the attorney to the town who has determined the same are acceptable in form and content. And whereas the attorney for Mitchell has provided a cross-access easement agreement, providing for the grant of a 50-foot right-of-way for the parties and their successors and assigns for ingress and egress to and from, from over the parcels for public access. All as shown on subdivision map for the purpose of internal access means to Stewart's parcel from the Mitch, Mitchell parcel and from the Stewart's parcel to the Mitchell property. And also provides for maintenance and repair of a cross-easement and snow plowing of the same with pro-rata sharing of costs, together with a 20-foot temporary drainage easement to be conveyed to Stewart's, by Stewart's to Mitchell, all of which has been reviewed by the town engineer and attorney to the town and have been found to be acceptable in form and content. Now therefore be it resolved that the conditional final subdivision approval is hereby granted, sorry, is hereby granted for the Mitchell subdivision Lot Line Adjustment, subject to the following terms and conditions. All fees for engineering and legal consulting services to the planning board in conjunction with review of this application and all filings and recreation fees be paid in full prior to the signing of the subdivision plot by the planning board chairman. That the said warranty, quote, merger deeds and cross-access easement agreement be duly filed by Mitchell in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office with proof of said filing provided to the attorney to the town and to the planning board. That the planning board reserves the right to conduct a further secret review of this matter as may be required in the event of any proposed development by Stewart's of the .496 acre parcel acquired herein from Mitchell. Okay. So I will now, I will, I'll now take a roll call vote.
Yeah, I just had one, one comment. Is Dale there? I didn't see, was he there?
He is.
Okay, I just had one question on the, on the warranty deed. Stewart's, the owner of the property is listed as Stewart Shops Corp., but on the subdivision map, it's Stewart's Ice Cream Company, Inc. So that's have, that's going to have to be clarified because you, you won't be able to, you shouldn't file those warranty deeds unless you have the right name of the, of Stewart's on there, so.
Okay. Like, I'll make that correction, Warren, thank you.
Okay, and, and also you'll note that in the event Stewart's comes back in the future and, and intends to develop or utilize that property, the, the planning board reserves its right to conduct a further secret review of those plans at that time.
Yes, understood.
Okay.
Does it have to be changed on here?
On the, on the mall.
For which one, yeah, well, that's the thing. Which one is correct? Which is the proper name, the one that's?
I don't know, they're gonna have to sort that out because that, that should be clarified when they file. I, I have no idea. I, who, who prepared that for you, Dale? Is that an attorney?
The attorney for Stewart's.
It's possible. They took, had a different name and they took title, which would be the name of the surveyor we find.
Right.
Yeah, it may be the surveyor's mistake, I don't know, but.
Okay.
Could be that.
That should be corrected.
Well, it's gotta be the same on both, whatever, whatever one is right.
Yeah, like I said, this, the map is gonna reference the deed on file. So Stewart's had a slightly different corporate name when they took title of this property years ago. That's gonna be the name. So you can't sign this. Yeah, no, well, that, that would be the name of the surveyor we find in the clerk's records.
Yeah. So we need to, if, if it is, that's the proper name, then we have to change the maps to match the deeds.
Yeah, if it's, man, I, I don't really care, to be honest, about changing the map. But I'm just pointing it out for purposes of filing the deeds. You, you gotta make sure the names are correct, but the map, the map is fine.
They may both be right, is what I'm saying. There may not be a mistake.
Got it.
Like when I worked at Morris, we changed names like four times since 2004 that I worked there. We were still Morris Associates, Morris LLC, Morris Associates this, you know what I mean?
Understood.
They could have done something similar.
You would hope that the, that the attorney on the deed, that made the deed from Stewart's would have the right name.
Yeah, one would hope.
Just needs to be verified.
Okay, so. So roll call vote, Dick.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Is Ethan not on there? Ethan's not on here.
I'm here.
I know, this is an old, an old form. Of course Peter isn't on the board. Oh, that's, that's what happened, this is an old. Okay, and I vote yes. And so. Six, is that right? Yes. So with a vote of six to zero, the resolution passes. So we just gotta get that straightened out and make sure we're up on escrow fees and et cetera. And then we'll, we'll sign the maps, all right?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna just leave them here and then find out what's up? And then let us know if these are good to go or?
I, I will talk to them tomorrow and, and get that squared away tomorrow.
Okay, so that was good. Okay, so the next up is a preliminary discussion with Mr. David Birch regarding Bean River Road subdivision. And can we pull up the current?
Sure.
I get. There we go.
Did you get the map that I, I sent over this morning?
We did, David, we're gonna pull it up on the screen and then you can, we can talk about it.
Excellent.
Just give us a moment, we'll be gonna pull up. Can you see it, David?
Yep.
All right, can we just make it a little smaller? I think it's the plus minus, right?
On the toolbar.
On the toolbar.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Okay, I guess, so just to refresh everyone, where we left off is we looked at this originally proposed through in preliminary discussion, the sketch plan. And we asked the applicant to come up with a conservation subdivision plan. We looked at the conservation subdivision plan and then voted and said he can go ahead with considering a regular subdivision of this area. So, so let's, David, tell us what's changed or what, or tell us about the project, et cetera.
Yeah, progress has been a little slower than we had hoped. But we're hoping that by next month, we can come up with a regular, a formal proposal. So I wanna check back with you and to see what else you would like us to add. The big change from last time is that we now have a six-lot subdivision instead of a seven-lot subdivision. The parcel two was split in half originally. But our engineer, Pat Prendergast, suggested that we eliminate that extra lot because the roadway would be quite steep going up to the back of that lot. So you'll notice that now all the house sites are in the front of the lot. They don't go all the way up to the top. Because that, that grade is pretty steep and it would be, it would require a switchback road or something of that sort. So he's done all the perk tests on the new lots and the deep hole tests on the new lots. And they're fairly uniform. They're going to require two to three foot of fill on the septic systems. We did the test of the existing wells and one of the wells was, was good, the one on parcel one. But the well on the parcel five was considered inadequate for the purposes of the realty subdivision. So we're probably going to drill a new well on parcel six. The Board of Health wanted us to have two good wells. So that's in the process of being done. In fact, we're supposed to be out next week with the Board of Health. Because they also wanted us to do deep hole tests on parcel one and five, the existing septic systems, to make sure that we had deep hole tests for the auxiliary systems. They require that you not only have a current system, but you show that you could put a auxiliary system in if it's needed at some later stage. You'll see, we're indicating on lots, parcels, parcels one, two, and three, that there'll be individual driveways. And we believe the site distances are good over there. The parcel five, six, and four, five, and six, you'll see are coming off of one driveway. That's because the highway department felt that it would make more sense just to have the one driveway rather than to try to put three driveways in because the line of sight wasn't great over there. So that was, that was actually approved years ago and they're, they're happy with that. So hopefully next month, next month or the month after, if, if it takes us longer, we'll come to you with the complete, completed subdivision. But I did wanna get back to you and, and ask you if you needed anything else from us in the next iteration.
I just had a question, who is happy with that, you're saying?
Who's happy with what?
With the driveways, who are you referring to?
That's the highway department.
The highway, you talked.
County, county highway department.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they were concerned about the site dis. Originally, we were thinking of having separate driveways on all the lots. But on four, five, and six, they suggested we have a common driveway. Close to the site, the site distances. Now, one, two, and three have separate driveways.
Right.
Site distances are better down there.
Is that a separate, or is it, they kinda has one entrance, right? One and two?
No, it's, it's, it's drawn that way, but it'll be two separate driveways.
It will be.
Yeah, they'll have separate driveways.
Right, right next to each other, though.
Correct. Right on the, right, right on the border of the property.
And where are the home site? I, I get for two and three, I don't see any home sites, Mario. Am I missing something?
No, I, for some reason, they're not on this drawing, but they'll, they'll be there. But they're lower down, they're in this area. So I was saying.
Like where the driveway ends?
Yeah, right, right, right over here where the driveway ends. Yeah, right, right, right over here where the driveway ends. Originally, I say we had, we had a seventh parcel with a, with a house site back here, but that would have required a driveway coming all the way to the, almost to the end of the property and it's quite, it gets quite steep over here. So the engineer suggested that we combine those two lots into one. So we don't have the issue about going up that steep area.
Are, are, are you going to be submitting all of Pat's drawings as well?
Yeah, yeah.
So what happens when you share a driveway like that?
Need easement. Yeah, access, just like we just did with Stewart's invention.
So again, the question is what else that you would like us to, uh, bring forth? When we come up with.
Uh, well, obviously, this is, this is, Warren, this is a major subdivision, right? Or, or is it?
They call, what they call a realty subdivision.
Yeah, so major subdivision, that's correct. So I mean, you have to look at those, uh, regulations for submitting that. Obviously, we will also, but, uh.
Yeah, that's why we've been dealing with the, uh, the Board of Health fairly extensively. And they require not only the, the design for the, for the, uh, primary system, but also the secondary system in case.
Standard, then, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, standard health department rules.
And Drew, remind us, what is the, uh, zoning where this is?
I think it's half acre.
Over this corner is Hamlet.
Hamlet, half acre.
So it's half acre? So obviously, they're well with it. I mean, I mean, it sounds like, you know, when you, once you consult the regulations and get all the things that are required, you know, it sounds like you can submit an application and then we'll, we'll, we'll tackle it. Uh, Warren, do you see anything I would?
No, I'm, I'm just wondering, we had a discussion about, I, I, I couldn't find my old notes on this. I don't know that we ever had a real file on this, but but what were the issues that Ray raised last time with, with the prior subdivision? Did, did that have to do with the conservation subdivision?
So what happened is he, we, we asked him to submit a conservation subdivision concept. Uh, and we looked at it and said, no, you can go ahead and do the, and we voted.
All right.
Go ahead with, uh, considering a regular subdivision.
Okay, all right, I, I just didn't recall, so.
It was a while ago.
This would be just a conventional subdivision and, uh, and it, it looks better to me with regard to the access to the individual lots. Uh, I think there was an issue as to, the, uh, I, I don't have a copy of the old map, but the, um, uh, the access to the subdivision, I thought violated our code. But this seems to be in accordance with the code, assuming that you, you'll get, um, approval for the driveway cuts from the county. I guess you'll need three driveway cuts, is that? Three or four? Three, right. And then the fourth, the fourth will be just one. That's the existing cut, actually. That's the existing driveway. Okay, um, and then, and then we're gonna need, uh, from a legal standpoint, you know, driveway maintenance agreements for the shared driveways, which should have to be reviewed. Uh, you know, as part of the subdivision approval or approved by me.
Okay, on the existing driveways, isn't he gonna need an extended, uh, isn't he gonna have to talk to the DOT because he's adding driveways and more traffic onto each of the driveways?
They should get a permit approval for each one.
Did you hear that, David?
I, I didn't hear it. Can you, can you say, repeat that?
They need permit approval from the county highway department for each entrance out onto the road. So in total, it looks like three, three approvals.
What, what about the, in the existing one?
The existing.
Does he have, scroll down a little bit?
And then.
Does he have?
Bottom there, they've got.
Does he have to get a reapproval for that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Increasing the intensity.
Yeah, so you'll have to get a reapproval for that existing.
Unless they approved it.
Yeah, I would agree.
I, I, I have, so in total, there's only gonna be, how many wells are you gonna, you're gonna eventually put wells on each of the other parcels? Or you're only gonna have two? Well, I'm confused about the well thing.
On a realty subdivision.
Yeah, no, they, on the realty subdivision, they just want to make sure that you have two good wells.
I see.
So we're not gonna construct the wells until, you know, the people buy the lots.
Do are good enough to say that there could be.
To show that you could have water.
Okay, yeah.
Don't want you to create a realty subdivision out there's no water.
Right, right. Okay. So like, and like you, you, you have a copy of the subdivision regulations?
Yes, I do.
All right. So we'll look forward to seeing your application then.
Okay, now, um, and, and, uh, just make sure, David, that you send copies of everything. Wha- what's our time? Do, are we, we're gonna wanna see this 10 days prior to the next meeting, is that?
Correct.
Okay, uh, just make sure you send copies to me and to, uh, and to George or, uh, C P L. So we have time to review it prior to the meeting. Okay, and what's, what's the progression now in terms of the application being submitted? Is that, do you have a public meeting at that point or you have a public meeting subsequently? Yeah, I don't want to give you legal advice that you have to look. I think first is sketch plan approval and then when we approve that, you, we, we are gonna schedule a public hearing on this, sure. Okay, sounds good. Appreciate your help. Hopefully, we'll be back, we'll be back 10 days before the next meeting, okay?
Yeah, just make sure anything, yeah, that everything gets scanned, you know, and sent, so we can email it all around and everyone can review it.
Great. All right, good night, David. Good seeing you. Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, bye.
Okay, so Sizzling Center, they had a family emergency, so they're not coming tonight.
Yeah, uh, can I ask a question about that? I, I thought there was, uh, someone had mentioned, you may have mentioned. Uh, have they completed everything that was required of the original site plan approval?
No, so the, the two purposes what they were coming to talk about was A, the lighting that they put up, that was not on the original plan. And then also give us a status of what's going on with the, the plan that is approved and what's changed and what needs yet to be done, et cetera.
Yeah.
So that, that, that was the purpose of them coming, so we get it. Um, but obviously, we'll have to wait till next time.
Yeah, just let them know that. I think that's, would be a good idea to bring everybody up to speed on where we are in there.
As far as.
Drew, have you talked to them at all?
Um, not this past month, I haven't, no.
I personally would like to see the original site plan because I couldn't find it on the website and through Pine Plains Views, thanks standing for us. Uh, back to two thousand and fifteen, I watched a lot of the videos surrounding the application, but couldn't find the actual application. So I'm sure it's here somewhere, but within the next month, that buys, you know, us a little.
The approved site plan.
And if anyone wants to waste eight hours, they can, there's all the videos. It's a lot, it's informative, all right?
If, if you find all that, I think it would be helpful to, uh, bring George up to speed and me up to speed. I just don't remember where we were on this so many years ago.
Send it to all of us.
I will email you all the links.
We'll get, we'll get the, we'll find the documents and email.
Okay, great.
Uh, okay, uh, as far as, I'm trying to think, is anything else we need? Uh, Warren, you have anything else to discuss with us or?
That's it, um, I think I'm, I'm tapped out at this point. I reach.
Oh, you got some rest.
My stamina isn't exactly what it was a few weeks ago.
Well, it's good to have you back.
No, it's good to be back. Good to see you all.
See you, Warren.
All right, bye bye.
Good night.
And George, you're, you're probably, I don't know if we have anything else for you and you have anything for us?
I don't think so. I was gonna ask a question. I, I saw something about solar loans.
Yes.
So I just wanted to.
So the solar law, do you guys are starting the local law process this next meeting or what, sir? What's the status?
You know what, I'm not absolutely certain.
Okay.
I'm not certain. It's, it's, we're, we're close to, uh.
Getting to that point.
I, I don't know if it's been finalized by B F J. I'm just not certain. I, I don't think I have seen a final rendition from B F J.
I have a very interested company. They emails me once a week. They ask me what the status of the laws. They're raringo. Yeah.
The project over by. Right. So, um, it, it is on the agenda, but as I recall, I don't think we have the final, um, uh, verbiage, verbiage.
Yeah, because of the last, your last meeting, they said we'll hope, hope to start the local law process.
Yeah.
But we don't think so, okay. Uh, so there is a draft, it's out there. We can email to you if you want to see it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I know we've worked on a few up in Columbia County and other places, but Columbia County is now kind of, they, they use a lot of the nicer word they're playing. They put what they thought was good, you know, try and tweak things. And they got a lot of buyer's remorse going on up there right now. Um, so they're, they're starting to redo laws. Um, and one of the things that's coming out a lot of what they're talking about is making sure that these things are dual purpose projects. If they tend to cite it on ag lands.
Yeah, oh, yes, the, the whole.
So there are things that they can do, uh, and other places are making them do, other countries, you know, other states where they're making them actually, you know, make these dual purpose. So they, they'll come in a lot of times, people will say, well, we're gonna bring in sheep, are you? But then they go, well, we're gonna, where are the sheep?
Well, we couldn't find them.
You know, the bees, which is great, but again, native wild flower mixes, trying to increase biodiversity. There are certain agriculture things that they could do for real, you know, they could plant certain things there. In Japan, a big.
I forget if there's, what language is in. But the planning board, we can be like, so what are you doing with this, you know? We can make them.
You know, it makes it better overall for the community because again, everyone likes the idea, but then all of a sudden, so.
One issue with that, and I was thinking about it, is I was looking at some of those, those sheep ones or whatever, is the height requirement. I think they would have to bump the height require, the height limit up to like twenty feet.
So they could be higher.
Yeah, because those things are pretty high. When they put the ones for the sheep, it needs to be higher for that. I meant to.
I think there should be flexibility about that.
Yeah.
And then, uh, anti-glare analysis is another thing you should.
Yeah, they got that in there.
A lot of people don't want to do it.
It's in there.
Yeah, so that's good.
So we're very restricted. Well, I'll send you, you'll see, it's very restrictive on the, what we call a tier three. Uh, so tier one is a person or a business on their roof. Tier two is anyone putting something on the ground for their use on, of, for the property. Right, so a house, a business, whatever. And then, uh, then tier three is commercial power generation of whatever.
Yeah.
Right, the farm goes in, the farm goes in the ag markets, right? So it's not as much.
A farm is ag markets for the solar.
No, if they're using it for their farm.
Right.
But if they're generating power and selling, then it, then it comes to. And then that has the most like, oh, view studies and glare and, uh, what else? We put a lot of stuff in there, I think. And we had a solar company come and kind of do a meeting where they told us like, just how they look at things. So we kind of, we're able to see and, and the whole, it seems pretty restrictive, at least right now, as far as the distribution grid around here. They can only go in certain areas.
That's true for everywhere, uh, but again, if they pay for the upgrade.
Right.
Then it comes in. Um, and again, we just, we've got, I think, six of them right now in the town of Clover.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's why they were like, ah, everyone started screaming, you guys are the ones who made the law. Now you wanna say we shouldn't approve it, that's not legal. You can't, you can't have it both ways.
You mean they have six proposed projects or they have six that are built and now they're having?
I think the sixth one is gonna be approved next month.
Wow.
But four of them are under construction right now.
Do you know whether, um, are there any plans for putting the solar, uh, under the power lines? Using, you know, those areas under the power lines?
I would say not.
That's not a good idea or?
Well, usually they have a right away easements up for those type of transmission lines.
Yeah.
They don't like let anything go on.
Because it would seem, uh, there are certain places where it would seem to me that that would be an ideal location, particularly when they're not, um, agricultural.
Right.
Uh, and, and there's. No, no. The, the one that crosses one ninety-nine, they were clearing it out. I was wondering if they're gonna put solar panels there because it goes up the hill, it faces south. It would be ideal for solar fields.
Yeah.
Well, maybe someone should talk to them.
Well, yeah.
You know, we really want to preserve the agricultural lands and that's, and that's not agricultural land. So it really is a useful place to put them.
Right, absolutely. And, and like I say, some, you know, some companies are, I know one company that does it, but, you know, they're gonna start changing some of the laws, like I said, around Columbia County to force the issue. There's a lot of our, our, you know, farmlands around here are kind of depleted soils to begin with because mono crops for so many years and whatnot. So again, putting it into solar, if they're doing biodiversity and they're checking the soils and they're meeting and they're doing things, they could actually change that soil to something better. And track it, right, and, and give scorecards back to the town so you can see what's going on. And then when the project, you know, is done in, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, if they decide to pull stakes and leave because they're not being subsidized anymore or the market isn't there or whatever, the, you know, the land is better than it was before when it gets returned to agriculture, uh, as opposed to.
Right, and then we're really paying attention to what they're gonna do with the, the land that's not part of the, actually covered by it. Right, because they were, what is it, thirty percent? Whatever it is, the percentage that we're requiring, the max you could cover of a parcel, what's the rest of the parcel gonna be, right?
And then how do you define coverage?
Well, you have the, where the panels are, plus then the fenced in area or whatever, whatever.
This was an argument in Clermont. They, they wanted ten acres is what they wanted. And then someone came in with a solar farm and there's usually around thirty, you know, fenced in area, thirty, thirty-five, you know, sometimes a little less. And, and they said, well, you can't do it, it's too big. And they went for interpretation and they did all the different panels. And they said, our panels are ten acres. And, and so again, they just, they knew what they wanted, but they wrote the words wrong. Your intent isn't what matters, it matters what you write. Personally, I said, you guys should have just said, you know, the, the solar farm. So you fence, that's your solar farm, it's thirty-five acres. Ten acres, by the way, doesn't work. You can't do a ten acre fence because they need to have a certain size in order to, you know, fit into the programs. So they do end up usually being around thirty, thirty-five acres fence. Forty for these parts or something like that. It's just, yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to.
That's a good point. Yeah, we'll have to make sure of that.
But yeah, there are, there are a lot of things you can do to make it, you know.
Just out of curiosity, what are the sizes of the ones in Clover? Another one in Coop.
Okay, yeah, they're, they're, that's the, that's the honey size that you keep referring to that. If you go up to the larger sizes, that takes it out of the realm of town.
Yeah.
Review and it becomes almost like a gravel line. The state reviews it, not the town. So like the big one they were dealing with in Coop, town doesn't get to review that one.
Basically, just give your opinion and they get ignored and thrown in the garbage. No seeker, nothing.
Yeah, it really is.
I don't know if that's.
It's not cool, but that is the way it's set up.
Interesting.
All right.
Yeah, better off just doing those smaller ones, uh, because, you know, there's a process.
All right, well, let's.
But that's, that's also again, I'd be happy to take a.
Thank you, yeah, we'll definitely send it.
When I get it, I'll try to remember to get it over to you.
All right, so May meeting minutes. Uh, we made a couple of changes to some of the. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
I made just some changes to make sure that we were clear on that we did the secret review and we made a negative declaration. I don't know if those changes actually went around, probably not, right? Because it was late this afternoon. But otherwise. And those are already incorporated. All right, can I have a motion to accept the May meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The May meeting, uh, minutes have been accepted. Drew, do you have anything else for us?
I have nothing for you tonight. I, I had a question for Drew.
All right.
I have a question for Drew, though.
He's ready. We have some questions.
Go ahead, Dick.
Okay, about a quarter mile east of the town hall.
About a quarter mile east of the town hall.
Sorry, the delay is spitting me out. On the, on the south side, there's, there's a road that is now a big road, a big driveway.
A big road, a big driveway.
And I was wondering if you knew what was going on up there?
And I was wondering if you knew what was going on up there?
Oh, I think Jay Yasovski is going to build a house on the property owns back there.
Okay.
Down past the town hall, where?
Okay. Like across from Rank, uh, Rankin's. Rankin, I wouldn't know who Rankin is.
Oh, up the hill.
Samantha Bop kind of.
In the cedar grove. It's all cedar.
Yeah, yeah, right past the cedars on, right, yeah.
Where the old barn is. Past.
Yeah, past there, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, past there, yeah.
And. Oh, yeah, Ethan.
Oh, hi. Only asleep at the wheel. Circle G Ranch on Route 83, just past Carpenter Hill Road. Which used to be Pine Plains Equestrian, which used to be Cedar Crest Farm, which used to be, which used to be, which used to be. They have a farm, a movable farm stand that is on probably a 20 foot, 25 foot, maybe used to be a hay trailer. And I don't recall ever seeing a farm stand or farm market application. Have you seen anything about that?
No, I'll go check it out. They may not need one. No, I will check it out. They may not need one. Because it's movable.
Because it's, if they're growing.
Grow it on their.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what they're growing. It looks nice.
I'll check it out. Oh, thank you.
Tomato.
I'll check it out. Oh, thank you.
And they have some movable signs they've put around, so they are, they're getting the word out. Looks like a nice little spot.
Is that the same place that had the horses and the lighting and everything?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so Drew, Dawn. Sarah, anything from the town board?
No, I don't know.
Alright. And I don't know, I don't think there's anything else that I have. I'm just trying to think.
Any word on annual sexual harassment training? Last year, we took it in February.
I have not heard of that. I've not heard a peep.
Councilwoman Joan laughs behind me.
Oh, has the town board have any ideas for Marty's spot or?
I don't know that we've thought about it.
Okay. Because he's, he's done in July, he said, right, he's moving.
Right.
So.
I mean, it's been announced, we, we have the operation, I know that, but I, I haven't heard anything.
Put it on the website or?
If anyone knows anyone, I guess, send a letter into, if anyone's interested.
There's going to be a spot on the, on the planning board, so.
For an alternate.
For an alternate, so anybody should submit a letter of interest.
To Brian.
Yes.
And alright, if that's it, if, can I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?